Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, and we all know tomorrow's April Fool's. So 2020 Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting. And we are again today having our meeting via Zoom communications electronically. So bear with us. If anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourselves and maybe raise your hand or get our attention. And we were happy to do that. Otherwise, we ask you that you put your device on mute so the barking dog don't interrupt our meeting. With us today, is there any other announcements further before we proceed with the meeting? Otherwise, with us today, we have Luann is present, our executive assistant. Clark is here, Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinish are your county supervisors. Lisa, our auditor, Lisa Smith, the auditor is with us via Zoom. And I can see her and I can actually see her across the hall. So I see Kelly is with us, Teresa is with us from the media. Welcome, everyone. We do have a few, maybe personnel here from the public. So if you want to speak at any time, just let us know. We will acknowledge during the visitor section if anybody wants to speak. So starting, if anybody doesn't, if anybody else has anything, please feel free. Otherwise, we'll start with Clark Schloss, our county engineer. And our first item under Clark is the opening of the fiscal year 2021 equipment bids.
Yes, Lisa has the bids and will be opening on reading the numbers. All we are doing today is reading the numbers. We'll take those numbers in a formal to add to the cap sheet, check the timing of the equipment, make sure it needs specifications, and come back with a recommendation next week. I guess I'll throw it over to Lisa to start opening up bids. Just let us know which ones you're opening up. We got some handwritten bid caps here that we can fill in.
Did you give them to us?
I have them. The first one this morning is for Martin Equipment.
Is this for the motor grater or what?
We're not sure.
Motor grater. So this is for a motor grater with attachments and accessories. Going back to the back page. So again, this is from Martin Equipment for the motor grater. The starting price is $297,750. A trade-in of $50,000 for a net bid of $247,750.
And I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm taking that's a John Deere, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Yep, this is a John Deere. Yes, this is a John Deere.
Thank you.
My next one is from, is for, it looks like a piece of cat equipment from Al Toppers Inc. Motor grater also. Okay, so this is, like I said, for a cat. The original price is $294,965 with a trade-in of $62,500 for a net bid after trade of $232,465. Do you have any other motor grater bids? And according, I have Mike Clausing and Sean here with me also. They are telling me that there are no other motor grater bids. So this is for a dump box.
The truck or the box?
Dump body, it says. So let me get it opened up. This is, this is a bid from Bonnell Industries. One 13, 14 center boxes for $81,000. Looks like we're buying two for a total bid of $162,000. This is from Bonnell Industries. This is a FedEx-delivered package. This is on a Monroe Truck Equipment is who the bid is from.
So the last one here, Jack, was Bonnell?
Yeah.
So it was 81 each?
So it looks like we're buying two and the bid was $81,000 apiece for a net bid of $162,000. So two dump bodies each are $72,456 for a...
This from?
This is from Monroe. Monroe Truck Equipment. This is $72,456 apiece or $144,912 for the two. And it looks like they have some exceptions here. It says, "See exception sheet on lead time," so there must be an issue. Yeah, so anyway, that's what, the way they've quoted it, so. This next one for a dump box is from Henderson. And the bid is coming from Henderson Products in Manchester, it looks like. So each dump box is $76,970 for a total bid of $153,940. These are truck, truck chassis bids. This one is from Peterbilt. The first one is a tandem axle truck. It's a Peterbilt 348. The first bid is for $108,797 minus a trade-in of $15,000 for a net bid of... Okay, then the next one, they did a tandem axle truck is $108,797 minus a trade-in of $19,000 for a total bid of $183,594. Again, that is a Peterbilt truck from Quad City, Peterbilt.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we bid two of them at the same price, two of them at the same trade-in, and the total was...
So the, the... $108,797 is the cost of the truck. One trade-in is for $15,000. The other trade-in is $19,000 for a net bid of $183,594. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, it does because they're bidding two new trucks, which are the same price. One of the trade-ins for us is a, two different types.
It'd be $216,000 minus 33.
One's a Freightliner M2106 and the other one's a Freightliner M2108. Counting number, two different numbers. So one truck is worth $15,000 and one worth $19,000.
That is correct. Next bid came in from Truck Country of Iowa. This is for a Western Star. The base quote is $106,668 for a Western Star 4700. A trade-in of $24,000. The second base quote for a tandem axle truck is $106,668 with a trade-in of $27,000 for a net quote for two tandem axle trucks of $162,336. $162,336.
Clark, they're gonna give us a trade for the dump box. We gotta bid them separate. I was just kidding. Swap them? Yeah.
Much more of those.
You'd have to do some mad figuring to... I'm sorry, Lisa.
So this, this next quote is from Twin Bridges Truck City. This is for, the base bid is $110,760.
700 what?
$110,760. With a trade-in of $16,000. The second base quote is for $110,760. A trade-in of $20,000 for a net bid of $185,520.
$185,520.
$185,520, correct. The next bid comes in from Thompson Truck and Trailer. Thompson Truck and Trailer's base quote for a tandem axle truck is $104,200 for an HV607 International with a $15,000 trade-in. The second is for a tandem axle truck of $104,200. That's an international HV607. The second trade-in is for $24,000 for a net quote for two tandem axle trucks, $169,400. So we're done with that. We move on now to truck bids, pickup truck bids.
No, no bid from Kenworth or MHC?
No. Nope, they chose not to bid.
With, while we're on that truck and box bid, Sean, do you have any comments on preference?
Can you hear Sean?
Our comment?
No, any, any of the above will be fine, I think, Mike.
Are you, are you, do we have Western Stars on our fleet right now?
We, we do not. They've always been too high because they're the premium truck, Freightliner's premium truck. And they've always been too high. They're usually right up there with Peterbilt Max. So I'm a little surprised that this price is this low.
So the Western Star basically a Freightliner?
They're both owned by Daimler. Western Star is the premium truck. Freightliner is the cheaper truck, if you will.
That's interesting.
They put a lot of money in their Freightliner trades is the only thing I can see. They, they, they've been really wanting the business.
Yeah, well, they would maybe have a better market for their Freightliner trade-ins too, you know what?
Certainly. Yep, I would agree.
Mike, any comments or?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, we'll move on to the truck bids, four-by-four pickup truck form. The first one came in from Brad Dairy Motors. The base bid...
Is this for the Dodge?
I'm, this is for a Ram. This is for a Dodge, a 2020 Dodge, 1500 quad cab, four-by-four classic. The base bid is for $28,855. A trade-in of $4,600 for a net bid of $24,255. With an optional six-year bumper-to-bumper from Zurich for $2,225. The next bid from Derry's also is a Silverado, which is a GM truck. The base bid or the base quote is for $29,423. A trade-in of $3,900 for a, a base total quote for $25,523 with the same extended warranty of $2,225. Next quote to come in is from Brad Dairy Ford. This is an F-150. The...
Same truck, extended cab, yeah, okay.
A trade-in of $4,500 for a total quote of $26,689. No extended warranty. Last bid to be opened up today is from, is from Rotman's. The original price is $30,178. A trade-in value of $4,660 for a net quote of $25,518. They are also bidding a service plan, six-year bumper-to-bumper service plan of $2,750.
And Tills did not bid?
They chose not to bid. Nothing received.
Clark, could you tell me what the trade-ins? It says GMC. What, what kind of year are we talking on? What is this thing? It's, this is standard cab?
This is the, if I'm looking at this right now, 2003 trade-in, Sean?
No, it'd be a 2010 regular cab.
GMC 1500.
What kind of mileage?
$150,000 roughly.
Any other comments? As far as pickups, preference, comments?
No.
From anyone?
They'll, they'll be fine.
Speak now if you have comments. What was our last one? Was our last one a Dodge or a Chevy or a GMC?
The GMC and a Ford.
And they were close, yeah?
Yes. We'll, we'll review them and see if there's somebody that, you know, offers a little more base stuff, kind of like we ran into with Clark's pickup there that time. Go from there, I guess.
Okay, come back with a recommendation?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
That conclude the bids?
Yes, it does.
Will you have?
That was painless. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. All right, next on our agenda is still Clark and it looks like he has some underground permits.
First one from the Coca-Cola Valley. A Washington Township, sections 18 and 19 of various roads. Boring, boarding ants, coal ground and ditch bottom from old coal. They've been putting in one of the... Basically, five-year off. Coca-Cola Valley, Washington Township, section 28 on 103rd Street. This would be boring 30 inches north of the existing coal lines, 30 inches deep. Two, one in the corner of the town, dudes. Third one is Miles Cooperative. This is the final township, 14 and 15, 64th Street. For 5162 to 5709264 Street. Very hyper off the cable on the south side of the road. All being recommended for approval. Lisa, can we do these on one motion?
We have before.
Yes, yes, you can.
Did you take your...
Yeah.
Camper off, Lisa?
I did.
Oh, there you are, hiding down there.
Here, here.
Yeah, you're dark. I got three rays.
How many roads do you have?
Three.
I have three.
Way up on the left-hand side, it says Gallery. Way up on the left, they've got a bunch of checkers, checkers on it.
Well, I got one square here.
One second.
So I go from...
Oh, look at that.
Gallery. All right. Technical difficulties repaired. Bjorn, be careful, I may be after your job.
I would move approval of the underground construction permits as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the underground crux construction permits as presented from Coca-Cola Valley Electric for 109 North Herbert Street and Coca-Cola Electric for 109 North Herbert Street as presented, and also one for Miles Cooperative Telephone for 342 Ferry Road. Miles, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried. Awesome.
The next two items on the way together are kind of combined into the ones we're talking about. The 188 street bridge repair. That was like $53,000. And the five-year road program was discussion whether we were going to accept the, the band-aid repair or to reject it and put it on, move that bridge up to the 2021 program. I have no objections to reject it. I'll call it the band-aid quote and moving it up to 2021. That's what we want to do, and we should take a separate vote to reject that temporary repair call.
And make a motion to reject the temporary repair bid of $53,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reject the bid for repair for $53,000, some odd cents, as presented. Any further discussion? I would just like to say in that bid, I went out and looked again at the bridge from the opposite side, walked it again. It, it looks really dangerous. And there is no real guarantee that this is even going to be the fix-all. And for how long is, will, could it last? So we are really up against a hard spot here as far as sticking that kind of money into a repair when we can put, maybe this bid's on the fast track and put a new structure in there.
Well, plus the fact that there's 15 vehicles a day that travel that road. So are we planning to close the bridge?
Yes.
It is closed.
I knew it was.
Yeah. I mean, I did have conversation from, with neighboring farmers there. And of course, they'd like it fixed. But again, I like to say there's, there's no guarantee that this is a fix. And so we're gonna move forward as presented. I have a motion and a second to reject the repair bid as presented. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, this gets us into the five-year road program. You should have a copy of the draft too. Basically, the changes to the 2021 program, starting in the 188 street bridge, which is 2023, 2021. We kind of looked at starting, you know, the archeological and that to see if there'd be any problems. This would be the ST, STD swap money that we use for that. That's the only change to 2021. For 2022, we pushed back Washington 3562, that's 475, definitely 25 times the 21 to 22. So we could take care of 188. I also see in red there where I put the South Street. And so, I wouldn't add it after the five-year road program that we're going to see again because we haven't signed the funding agreement. But this is where I'd like to see where to go because that'd be the greatest chance of not having to push up the bridges back on the five-year road program. That's no guarantee that it'd end up there. That's where I'd like to see it. That's why I put it in there, ready to show you. But I'd like to see...
Does this still conflict, do you think, in 2022 with Platte Street?
If it would be, it'd only be, you know, half of it, not the, not the, not the whole thing. If you're coming from the north or from the west, you could go around on 61. You get to the south side of that bridge. It'd be more of a conflict if you were coming from the east. If you, you know, they were starting at the east Platte Street and trying to get around on that. So, you know, those are still lanes to be burned up. I think that's the schedule. We can go east to west on Platte when we start this trucking.
Well, there's no doubt that either of these projects that we're talking about is going to be an inconvenience to some individuals. And progress sometimes comes with pain. But I, I guess, yes, myself, I would like to see that 188 proceed as quickly as we can and get that on the fast track. And there's too many unknowns with the South Main, so that's kind of a tentative.
Well, even with South Main, we talked about doing half the bridge at one time with the trail and switch, flipping back and forth. So one lane would be open at all times.
We did talk about that. And our bridge construction guy come back and says, "Your cost is going to double because it's like building two bridges."
Oh, it would go up that much. Okay. I guess we're looking at the price too.
Yeah.
Also added on 2022 is Z40, those 20-pound line, that's basically miles, three-quarters of a mile. That would be an FM job, around $300,000, pulled in place, recycled. Clayton County contacted us and wanted to know if we wanted to tag along. Basically, they're doing the design work. So, you know, it's kind of like the FM account could take, it might even be less than that with Todd's estimate per mile cost. I felt, you know, let's have a bit of cushion there, just sure.
Does that sound extensive for three-quarters of a mile?
There's a little bit of padding in there. He had like $290,000 per mile, three-quarters of a mile. I wondered a little bit of lead lane there because you're almost talking two years for the letting. So who knows what's gonna happen in two years?
Well, I, I would say, you know, along with the asphalt-type coating structures that we've been resurfacing, doesn't asphalt reflect kind of the prices of oil? Isn't there a mixture?
Yes, well, yeah, asphalt.
You know what I'm saying?
When oil goes down, asphalt should go down. When oil goes up, asphalt should go up. But again, two years, you know, who knows? What is it, Saudi Arabia, Russia, or Canada, and everyone will say gas. An oil one. So prices are really good, but we're just kind of waiting to see for two years and just keep going.
Okay, so we can, we can take action on this road, or this five-year road plan as presented and...
Anytime, we could pass it today, have it submitted to the state, and then again on their computer. And tomorrow, we could submit it.
That's all.
They may not like it, we can do it.
Okay, with no penalty, right?
Well, if we hit it that quick, I'm sure they've talked.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, if something like happens to us like on 188, that's a, that's a, basically an emergency, so.
This is, we've shifted things before, not all that often. But we have done changes to five-year road program after it went... After it went through its emissions.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the five year road plan as presented. Uh, which includes moving the hundred and eighty eight street bridge up ASAP. All those in favor say aye. I opposed nay, motion carried.
Can you, what's your any other comments or questions, what's on what you need?
I do have a comment, clerk, it's it's kind of odd or ironic, I I think that that's something like this would actually happen. But I've actually had several calls, not just one, on individuals. Removing rock. From our public roads and use it in a private setting.
Oh, yeah, that's happened throughout the years, so, yes, that has happened. Uh, you know, unless we, unless someone comes forward and says, you know, I've seen it do this. Uh, you know, we could go out there and say, hey, it looks, you know, this is what looks what happened. But if we haven't seen it direct, uh.
Hard to prove.
It's hard to prove. Yes, it is a theft, I mean, it's, you can be subject to being prosecuted for theft.
That was my question, what were the legal consequences for doing such a thing or acting in that manner, that's seems a little.
What degree of theft?
Barbaric.
Sarah's the expert on what degree of theft this will be, it's going to be on the dollar amount. That be placed on that theft. Because you know, the higher the amount you steal, the more serious the crime is. So, yes, people do tend to do that, they are committing theft. And you can be caught early in the process.
Okay, so let's, I I guess I'm going to put a plea out to the public, let's not do that. I mean, we are trying also, um. There is gravel available in the corries, if you need some for your personal use, we ask that you not take it off the county roads.
Well, they complain because we don't put enough gravel on the gravel roads and then some people are taking it off the gravel roads.
Maybe that's why they want more.
And it's not one isolated incident either, that's kind of odd that this all come about lately, you'd think last year would have been worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks clerk.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Um, Lisa?
I'll make it quick this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty board proceedings. As written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved in seconds.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March twenty fourth to twenty twenty board proceedings as written, all those in favor say aye. I opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and seven cents. I had a few questions earlier that I spoke to Shelley about and I got them confirmed, so I am okay with them. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. I oppose nay, motion carried.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. Are there any? Visitors or citizens that have any comments or would like to speak at this time? That are with us today. Hearing none, we will, and Luann has stepped out. Briefly, I seen Becky in the hall. Anybody see her in the hall yet?
I will send her over, she's on her way.
Good morning. We're joined with Becky Chapin, our human resource. Director and first of all, we'd like to pass on our sympathy. Yep, that's a, that's a good life, but never, never ready, so.
So anyway, I'm here today for a work session, so even though we're having a open work session, well, this today is going to remind us all that. The information is still somewhat confidential in regards to the other personnel account was the most kind of thing that so there's kind of. Um, I wanted to have the work session today, Clark had brought to my attention last week that due to the hundred and eighty eight bridge closing, potentially just to move that project up. Um, we have been discussing the assistant engineer position over the past few months, one of which would be a potential candidate. Um, or a vendor for that project or share with another county only forty of ours. So, um, I just wanted to continue the discussion on where we can want to go as far as the system position goes. I have been in contact with um, all of the potential candidates over the last few weeks and they're just kind of wanting to know where we stand when making a decision. So I just wanted to bring.
Do you want to move that, we're getting you putting your nose.
Oh, okay, okay.
Much better looking now, yeah.
So I just wanted to bring the discussion back up again to see if you want to. Move forward in any way.
Well, I think with the change in the law, that will allow us to go outside of our bordering counties. We need to, I think, need to have our chair have a discussion or the board have a discussion with uh. The other county that would be involved with a shared position. Um, and see what we can, like what we can put together. I think we're ready to move on.
I I think I'd like to pursue our opportunities anyway that's in front of us, we have. Again, we have a couple of individuals that we like is. That had applied basically and. So, yeah, I mean, I know we have some confidence information that was put out there that we talked about. I'd like to, I I would like to proceed with.
And we do have quite a few projects coming up, again, the hundred eighty eighth bridge just jumped out of nowhere, so. We do have a real need for it.
Final conservation is talking about some projects too that could be included if maybe this up. So, um, in your. Best, what what what's our next processes, is is myself maybe making contact with?
I think it would be appropriate. For that, we need to make contact with other counties.
So we could have discussions, you know, with whoever it may be surrounding.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Start with a contact to to their board and then. Um, eventually have their board and our board meet together and see if we can iron out some kind of an agreement. To provide services here and there both and share the cost. And then eventually move forward beyond that.
Well, if we can take advantage of the situation and and everybody else is on board, we'll we'll know. The only way we're going to know is if we proceed.
Right.
Yeah.
So you'll make contact and if we decide to pursue further, let me know.
Yeah, I'll be in contact, um. Oh, probably just for information, basically, yeah. Appreciate it.
All right. I think that's all I'm on for right now.
You are due back at tenish, is that it? Okay. Thank you. Uh, Luann, we skipped over you.
Yes, I did.
Stepped out. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The only business I have this morning is the calendar. Tomorrow morning, like people full day at nine AM is an RTA meeting for all three of you, that's a a conference call. At two PM that afternoon is a conference call for Jack with the workforce Iowa. The WIWA, that's a conference call for Jack. Thursday, April second at five o'clock, five PM is a local emergency planning committee meeting. Done by conference call and that's for, and you get one two.
Actually, me and Larry were attended the last one and it was good discussion, I mean, with everything that's going on. We had twenty five approximately people on the call, including nursing homes, hospital.
Everyone in the county, it's just good to have everybody.
Nurses, yeah, so everybody, uh, really good conversation. Put a lot of input into it and. I think what we're doing is the best we can, where as as of right now, just to update a little bit, if anybody's watching. We are, of course, going by the recommendations of the Iowa Department of Public Health and the CD CDC. Can uh, disease control centers, so, um, again, we're we're. Abiding by the proclamation, we we hope that everybody else abides to, it's hitting a little closer to home now, so. Let's all be aware of our responsibilities, I guess with that being said.
And they're meeting every week now.
Right.
And and the main topic is COVID nineteen. Take care of Jackson County in the midst of the pandemic, so. Friday, April third at one thirty PM is a conference call with the Mississippi Valley workforce area for Jack. Monday, April sixth at one thirty PM is a regional governing board meeting for Jack. That will also be offered by some form of conference call. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April seventh at nine AM. That afternoon at five PM. Um, I intended would have another meeting of the LEPC, the receivable commission, I have to verify that yet. And at four thirty that afternoon is a conference call with the Mississippi Valley workforce area for Jack. Meetings are changing momentarily as we speak.
We're doing the best we can and, you know, I mean, even going forward, I think this. You know, this type of conference call that we're doing here or even other calls that we're making seem to be working out fairly well. Everybody seems to be get heard and. Sometime maybe discussion leads to a little more if you're not face to face, so. Yeah, yeah.
Everybody is learning and adapting.
And again, we hope with this finds everybody in good health and and stay that way, so. I, is that it?
That's it.
That's it, short and brief. Uh, thank you, Luann. Um, is there any other boards or commissions reports that anybody would like to update us on? I know.
We did have our um, governing board meeting yesterday, we approved the budget. Uh, for twenty one for mental health. Uh, seven million, eight hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars.
Am I correct in saying that's for four counties?
Four counties, yes. We, we, we authorized Plan C and this is about. Uh, sixty thousand dollars less than Plan C, which is good because that still gives us a little extra cushion for carryover. Um, we also had our discussion on the letter that was sent to us from Muscatine asking us to. Resend their departure letter that they sent in November. On a three to two vote that was defeated and. They will be done July first. I did explain to them, um, and everybody had an opportunity to talk. And, um, I did tell them that Sarah had said, you know, actually, when when they sent the letter and we approved the letter. That concluded that act of business. So, actually, we could have rescinded it and started over again, but Sarah also said that we. Could tell them that, you know, we're not going to do that, but there's no reason that they can't reapply if they desire. They really want to go with seal, but they've tried three times and they haven't accepted them. Julie Jetter was on the the call with us yesterday from the Department of Human Services. And, um, when it got to, what's our, what's the next step? She basically said, uh. You could tell she was busy at her desk because she was on the screen like this and, um. She said, right now, she was communicating with the director of the Department of Human Services and Teresa Armstrong. Uh, to tell them that they had to move quickly. So we don't know what's going to happen, if they over assign them. Uh, or if they will be assigned somewhere else.
So basically, we have three, they have three months to find a region. Um, again, um, you had spoke last time that there is. I- if they did rejoin, that the budget would reflect their.
See, each one of the counties does their own budget and then they put it all together to make the regional budget. So, Muscatine County does have a budget ready, if they would be.
Did they, have they submitted that to you?
Pardon?
Have you seen their budget?
No, no, no.
You so.
The management team maybe has, but I doubt it.
Okay.
I doubt it.
Would be kind of important if they want to come in too, I would think.
But, um, they would submit their budget, um, both revenue and expenses. And it would just be combined with what we currently have. But I really don't foresee that happening.
I mean, I know things have changed, they have a different representative, is that correct also?
Yes, Jeff Lawrence has been very easy to work with. I'm working with him with the Iowa Works. Um, he's the representative on the workforce development board and so, um, that. I mean, and I also said that yesterday, I said the cooperation that we've had with Jeff is. Far superior to what the former representatives' participation was and, um. But there's still a problem with their, their limb bulbs. Um, uh, she is. She's quite a unique individual, that's the best way for for me to put it.
Diplomatic.
Yeah, so anyway, uh. We'll see what happens with that, but we did approve the budget and.
And on the other side of that, I mean, there's so many unknowns coming forward, you know. Is is this whole? Virus thing going to increase our mental health need for facilities and measures?
Well, we talked about that yesterday too. Um, a couple of the providers were online too and they said with. With the the virus pandemic that we have, people are losing their jobs, they're. Um, out there, don't have any money.
Very stressful.
And it's, it is extremely stressful, so we also talked about, you know, we have no idea. How many, what the numbers are going to be.
Yeah, the need, the need for services may increase dramatically. And we're going to have to play it best we can and deal with that and, uh.
But hopefully too, the funding will come with that, I mean, with the declarations and stuff.
And and it very well could be, you know.
All of the, all of the, um, the budget that we currently have. Uh, is with the legislators doing nothing to help us.
And and there could be extra funding because of that, I think, I've seen bits and pieces of it and they say there could be potential. Of this coming to the region, um, there could be potential of infrastructure money coming to the region, we don't know, I I guess.
The money coming to the individual families should be coming out soon. That's pretty vague, but and it's coming to your address, I mean, if you file a tax return in two thousand eighteen. You will be sent that money, will be put into your checking account, so. Nobody has any timeline on that yet, but you know, there's a lot of desperate people out there.
Wait to be seen, yes. Yeah, no, there's no doubt about it, so there's so many unknowns and I appreciate the work you've done with that, that's. You had a couple of little different things on your plate, I know Operation New View, I've seen emails on John, from John and.
Are moving forward with the merger.
Sounds like a good deal.
Um, I I I'm hoping it will be, I think it will be, um, they've guaranteed us that all of the. Current employees will have a job at least during the transition and they said the majority of them will have a job after the transition's completed. The only, the only one that I feel kind of bad about is Joe might not have a job, the finance person. Because they have a finance department in their headquarters and so. They really won't need somebody here doing our individual finances because it'll be all lumped together. They still have not heard whether they have Head Start, they were the only one that applied. So we're assuming that HACAP will have our Head Start program starting in the fall. So we're assuming that HACAP will have our Head Start program starting in the fall. Uh but we have, you know, we've worked out a bunch of stuff and uh we submitted our um. Request to merge and hopefully everything's gonna fall into place, we also ask, John is. Still participating with us and we extended it to the month of April, but we also are. Laura is meeting with HACAP to see if we can't get somebody from HACAP onsite. In Dubuque uh as as close to April first as possible. So that they have a presence there and um. Then the Macocota office and Manchester office will stay open and functioning. Each office, um each county will have kind of their go-to person. And I would say probably in our county, it would be Ramel Clark. And I don't know who it would be a Manchester, but whoever is doing that now. But they want to have somebody from HACAP come to the Dubuque office and kind of oversee the operation there. Because it's it's really kind of difficult for for John when he's not there and. Beverly's accepted a lot more responsibility, it's done a great job, but um it would be good to have them. Visibly a part of.
True, basically overseen like the region type here or a district area or something. Yeah, I seen that and again, I I think I read something on that too, there could be extra funding coming down the pipeline for services there also.
John told us with the stimulus package from from the federal government. They, we should be, C C B G should be getting some additional funding to help people that are in. Dire straits with 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 the pandemic and so he said it looks like. We should be maybe getting some more assistance money for the for public, for the people that are really in need. So.
Well, we hope so, I guess, and again, we're all in this together and uh you see it locally where people are really stepping up and. Volunteering and donating and. And it's a, it's a good thing to see here in in the rural counties, in the rural areas and uh hopefully just work through it, that's all we can do.
And this week, I think Luanne must have gotten something from Jeremy.
And he asked.
Out of a meeting for the um workforce development.
He's on the one tomorrow.
Afternoon.
Tomorrow at two o'clock.
Yeah, um we're moving forward with the merger with uh nine and sixteen. And um but we have to have the Region Nine Board of Directors. Meet and discuss it because they've they not have, Paula has not had a meeting for quite some time. And the last time we did have a meeting, we didn't have a forum to do any business. So we're gonna have a a conference call meeting tomorrow to discuss what's transpired. Um and where we have to move and then to talk about uh workforce development board membership. Because there's specific.
Guidelines.
Guidelines to what they have to be and how they also guidelines onto how they can be appointed. So we have to go over that tomorrow and because we're supposed to have our boards. Pretty much in place by, they first they said April fifteenth, but now they've given a little leeway into that. So it'll be a little bit later, but we have submitted our letter of intent to merge to the department and um.
Well, that's a large, that's a large region, am I finally correct to say it's something around fifteen counties when it's all said?
It'll be eight, eight counties, but it was. But at our E C I A meeting last week, they have uh the one-stop shop. E C I A kind of oversees that and they have three employees that do that for Dubuque and Delaware County. And Dubuque and Delaware County are joining a different group also. They will end up, they'll have twenty counties, it'll be from Dubuque over to Waterloo up to Mason City. Over to Decorah, that whole area, there'll be twenty counties and they wanted E C I A to apply. To be the one-stop operator for that region and Kelly's, you know, we talked about it as a executive committee. Before the board meeting, then we talked about it at the board meeting and, you know, that's quite an undertaking. Twenty counties when uh E C I A really is busy doing what they do now. And so uh it was the decision of the board when we met that they not apply unless they put together. From some of the other regions that they're joining, a consortium of providers so that it's not just one. One group, so we'll see what happens with that, but we told her that we didn't think that it was in the. Agency's best interest for them to apply to be that.
Well, that certainly seems to be the trend in in a lot of different um committees and such as combining and. And again, that's tougher to get a quorum, the only thing I would say, these go-to meetings and these things like this make it easier for quorum. It's maybe not the best of talk, not face to face, but sometimes it is, so it's uh it's nice that we can go that, have this option and. To work through that, uh it's inevitable that these these committees and these organizations are gonna combine, so.
Yeah, it seems like the key word for the for the state of Iowa is regionalization.
Yeah, yeah, which I guess in a sense takes a lot of administration maybe. Needed maybe eliminates some of that, I mean, I don't like to take anybody's jobs for sure, but uh when you.
The only thing is though, Mike, they regionalize, but then they tell you every single step you're gonna take to do it. And some of it is absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, well, hopefully you can get work through that and you know, maybe. Get some insight and and explain to them that that's not really going to work that way, so.
I mean. You know, you used to go to the board meeting, you took care of it and now we're at the point with Operation New View with this with. With male health and I'm sure with your seventh judicial and all of that, you're having to not only. Run the meetings, you're having to create a whole new system. With all the guidelines that the state has said, this is what you have to do and you know. As we're constantly being told, we're part-time employees, but that is not the case in a lot of instances.
That's correct.
We're not behind this desk every day, but we're doing something.
If you're not doing something else, you're still thinking about it and trying to figure things out, so it's it's constant job.
Appreciate for the reports there, Jack, and and good luck with the rest of that, I hope everything works out as planned there.
So do I.
We have a ten o'clock closed session for personnel work session, other than that. Um I am going to make contact with John, I have it on my notes. For to see if if how he's progressing with any plans or um numbers. And if we can get a report and see if he's gonna be in the area, I know Together We Build is working with them also, so I don't know if he's gonna be up here at some time.
And he's doing the Manchester jail.
Right, right, so.
Uh where's that, where's that at, Manchester, are they building it now or?
I think they're doing the groundwork and getting this, that's that part done.
Just getting started.
I don't know that he, that they've actually started any construction.
Okay.
I talked to Jeff a while back and seems to me that the the the. Earthwork and that is in the process, but I haven't asked him for a while.
You know where the location is?
It's in Manchester, but I don't know the exact location.
I think it's on the outskirts of Manchester because they changed from one location to another.
Sorry, I get up there once in a while for the watershed thing, thought I could drop you.
Yeah, I just give Shirley or Jeff a call or Pete or somebody, you need a number, I got Pete's number and Jeff's too, I think Shirley does. Yeah, I think it's easy enough to find that out, but uh, yeah, so other than that, I I would, this under old business and unfinished business. This conservation report that we now get from them is phenomenal.
Yes.
Um I I'd like to see something implemented, maybe in other departments. Of how they follow their budget, I mean, it's it's uh actually a good idea, so.
See how many um seminars and stuff and how often they're they're in the schools constantly doing the programs. And even now, I I was fortunate to, they're visible for their outdoor thing and a couple of other projects out there some years back. And it was just every day, there's a constant flow of school buses, even through the summer coming out and the kids are out in the pond, you know, digging up. Worms and spiders and everything else and I mean, it was just really hands-on.
They they definitely have some good projects going and they definitely have some work in front of them, uh I went up to First Creek Park last night and it's like. We're taking on a little water, so, but I I just thought their budget process here monthly to know what they spend and where it is. And the and the percentage of where they're at left in their budget was, I don't know if this is something that we can implement.
Well, it's certainly, it's very, it's very eye-opening.
Yeah. Appreciate that, so um can we adjourn before the closed session or is that? Recession and then add, come back after the closed session?
So we were having a discussion here, we believe that.
Hang on.
As you need to vote to go into closed session and then vote to come out of closed session. That as far as the Zoom meeting, what we will be doing is pausing the recording. You can have your closed session, we are not going to be doing what they call a breakout room because all three board members are present. Becky is here, she has the tape recorder, so we feel that what we will be doing is just. Pausing the Zoom meeting, you can do your closed session and then you can adjourn after after the closed session.
Okay.
What about Lynn though?
And and is that something that? I, I I know it is and and is that something that I can declare? As chair legally, did we talk to Sarah about that, I'm gonna tell everybody what it is, it's it's. It's for us to say it's okay for Lynn to apply for a grant for extra funding. Uh for the current situation that we have, emergency P P E equipment, da-da-da, personal protection equipment. Um of course, we're gonna let him apply for the grant. So if there's a way that the whole board does not have to stay here until twelve, the reason we had it set at twelve because.
Twenty-four hour notice.
Twenty-four hour notice and the emails have. You know, with thirty-five emails.
If we recess, we don't have to stay here till twelve forty-five, we can, we can come back at twelve forty-five.
Correct.
Just come back on your iPad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna recess for a closed session, is Becky available? Or she's gonna stay over there?
We have to.
She's coming over.
A motion to go into closed session, but then you bring us out of closed session because you can't make us a motion in closed session.
Make a motion in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion in session and a second to go into closed session regarding a personnel work session, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, nay, motion carried, we are now in closed session. You're recording. Okay, so we will reconvene at this time, we have kind of a, what you would call an emergency situation, we're joined by Lynn, meaning our our emergency management coordinator. And he's here to give us uh ask for a request to uh apply for a grant and he's got other situations on his table. So we are reconvening at this time, it's eleven thirty-five, eleven thirty. Eleven twenty-seven, so.
Does he need the the camera or the?
Do you need a?
Does he need that?
I'm pretty simple.
Okay.
So.
So Lisa, when Lynn is talking, can you hear him?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, go ahead, Lynn.
I know there's a community block grant out there for twenty-four hundred dollars and that, that was under ten and talked about that. But the more I look at this, um there's public assistance out there. And for me to be able to apply for public assistance, I need to have a benchmark for three hundred dollars. Well, I can either do that on my own or I can do it as a county and what I like to do, do it as a county, so. What that means is what I have invested in dollars, what the county has invested, so what you guys here Zoom would be covered. Any I T equipment that you guys need to get this done, it's covered under public assistance. Um the sheriff's department bought some of the equipment, so basically instead of everybody doing their own thing, so like when we have a declaration like. Conservation does their own, Clark does some, I would like to just pull everybody together, do it under one setting.
And we have a better access to maybe more funding that way also, yes. So you need our permission to do that, that's what you're asking?
Say let's do it under one, so you guys know what's going on and uh we'll move forward. I'll submit it to R F B, get it submitted so we can start tracking stuff.
So we need a motion basically to prove, to let Lynn proceed uh to apply for grant funding as a county entity, is that correct?
I would make that motion.
I second.
I have a motion in a second to have Lynn, our emergency manager coordinator, proceed as best he fitted for funding. Emergency funding for the. Basically P P E equipment of, yeah, everything related to.
Dollars that are used to purchase equipment, so like we're getting face masks built here in Jackson County from a vendor that has a three D printer. They're gonna be a dollar, dollar ten, so if I buy a hundred and fifty of them, you know, that's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Expenses.
But just so you understand, the twenty-four hundred dollar block grant is off the table because I can't double dip.
Sure, sure.
Okay, but we're, per se, we're gonna exceed that by all balance anyway, so. Right.
Basically, I don't know what the future looks like, we'll probably have more dollars maybe in two weeks, three weeks.
Right.
Without a doubt.
Right, and we'll proceed with applying again.
You know, Mike ran down, I got thirty gallons of uh hand sanitizer, I think I'll probably order. Another, I got sixty gallons left, but it's all dispersed out, so when people start using that, you know.
Agreed.
Right, and just so you're aware that I also did purchase a spray gun so we can basically decon an office building. We need to like in the hospital or anything like that, vehicles.
I would say the more, the more prepared we can be, the best, better off we are, so that's that's logical. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carried, thank you Lynn.
Thank you, John.
Good luck and stay safe.
Yeah. Okay, see ya.
Is there any other business before the board?
We just got the word for the contract on Iron Bridge Road, uh they wanna start at the bridge on the eight vehicle. And so that bridge will be closed for about four weeks, we have a detour. Uh if you're on Highway sixty-two, you go north to Andrew and you'll continue east. Uh past Spring Rock and then go down Z twenty uh to Sprigville and then you can take. The twenty-three wide to east end of the bridge, so that will be for about four weeks. Uh we'll send a notice out to the papers and the radio on that one, may have, you know, a detour on that.
So they'll be closing in about a week.
Uh in about a week, yes.
Yeah, it's important.
Three to four.
As I say, it's important to get it on the radio because the newspapers only publish it once a week, once a national.
You said, you said Iron Bridge, correct?
Correct, not the High Bridge, Iron Bridge, on the road from sixty-two going to Sprigville, that's a resurface.
Yeah.
Right, but but it's not a bridge project, it's a resurface.
We're doing the bridge approaches, guard rail, uh there's, if you come, if you're heading towards the end, when you're coming off the bridge, there's a.
That's the one I get.
Yeah, so that's being taken care of.
Part about it is, we're not doing what we should be doing. We're not.
We're just pre-grinding it and.
We're not doing it so that it's safer, we're just making it smoother.
Well, we don't have the funding to buy right away and.
Realignment of some portions of the road by at least two hours.
Right. Okay. Appreciate the update.
And you missed one of the utility current signatures.
Okay, I'll be back over, we wanna. Okay, I'll be back over, we wanna. Alright, any other business before the board this morning?
I will adjourn.
Oh, okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, oppose nay, motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all, stay safe.